I will call to order.
There's enough of us, we're good.
The February 18th, 2020 meeting of the City of Falls Ridge Planning Commission. Ms. Spade, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rincon.
Here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Ms. Peets.
Here.
Mr. Wodisca.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. If I can get a motion to adopt the agenda.
Do you want a motion, or do you want to alter the agenda?
Oh, we need to adopt.
I move that we accept the agenda, but we move the minutes above the CIP.
So move items six B, C, and D above item six A?
Oh, wait, she's back.
I think she could still give her two minutes, that's all it'll take.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, our modified agenda has been adopted. I assume we don't have any items from the public not on the agenda, seeing no public here. All right, and we do not have a speaker series, so let's just, see, we were gonna skip into our minutes real quick, but it shouldn't take too long. Take them in order, February 3rd, 2020, minutes, a date we can probably remember. Any modifications, adjustments, edits?
No.
Did it quote how much Mr. Krasner didn't like that one proposal, or no? No, no adjustments.
No adjustments. Think it was accurate.
I move that we accept the minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that one passes. All right, now it gets a little harder. December 17th, 2018. That was a long time ago. I looked through them, they looked.
I move that we accept the minutes of December 17th, 2018. I didn't see anything that seemed out of.
I read them, I second it. It's good.
All right.
All those who were there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, none, and I assume Ms. Weiss will abstain. And then finally, December 3rd, 2018, minutes, similar to the other ones, a long time ago, looks good to me.
Yeah, I move that we accept the minutes of December 3rd, 2018.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, none, Ms. Weiss abstained. All right, now we're on to item six A, CIP.
Are we all caught up on minutes? Because that's gone deep.
Not yet.
Wow. I'm impressed, a lot of hard work.
And just so anyone who's watching knows, we had a change in the staff during that timeframe, and they got backed up, and I think you guys have been doing a great job catching us up, but it's not an easy task, so appreciate the work on that. All right, we're ready.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, thank you for putting me on the agenda for the CIP adoption. I don't have a formal presentation this evening, I just want to highlight a few items that are noted in your staff report that's before you. I did attach the PowerPoint from the January 27th council meeting, I gave you an update on the library project, and some of the things that the Commissioners were asking about. The lessons learned wasn't actually available till this afternoon, which is being presented to council tonight. So I will forward, if that's all right with you, just forward you that PowerPoint so that you have that follow-up information.
Thank you.
For the staff report, starting at line 156, I just wanted to highlight that section where I tried to summarize the conversation and dialogue we had on the CIP after the presentation, which was a good, robust conversation, and noted that we highlighted the new reports, the report card, the action report, and the updated schedule. Staff will continue to refine that, so we welcome any feedback on that. And then drawing your attention to the proposed motion on page one, the motion remains, the core of it is, it remains as you saw on February 3rd. I did add items seven and eight, in hopes of reflecting the comments from the Commissioners, so that it could be either a starting point, or if it met your goal, you could adopt it as is. Item number nine, I did add, so that we could specifically get your feedback on the streetlight program. We had a good discussion, we talked about what the designs and stuff were on that page 8-15, but didn't really close out the conversation as to whether, besides supporting the concept, you had any agreement or disagreement with the light fixtures and the plan. So I put that forth in the motion for your consideration, so that staff could have direction. And so with that, I'm really just glad to answer any questions or have additional dialogue on the CIP as presented to you on February 3rd.
All right, thank you very much. I definitely appreciated the additions of seven and eight. I think Ms. Weiss had some potential refinements to that, or at least some conversation to have about that, so let's just dive in on that, I have some other questions as well, but.
That sounds good, yes, so thank you for reflecting the conversation on stormwater and green infrastructure. I would like to propose a couple of changes to it, just because I think it's subtle, but I'd like to be a little bit more direct. So what I would suggest, this is a minor comment, but in the first paragraph of the motion, I'd like to suggest, after, based on the following justifications, something like, and with the following caveats as well, because I don't think the latter paragraphs are justifications. And then, in paragraph seven, where we talk about stormwater CIP projects, I'd like to make a finer point about why we want to link green infrastructure to this, and I'd like to suggest something like a sentence before the one that you have there. "Green infrastructure can reduce capital costs of stormwater infrastructure, and we are concerned about imprudent allocation of capital to stormwater projects in the absence of a green infrastructure plan." And then, to that end, and on page 10, 10-6, in the stormwater tab, I think it would be helpful to make a note in there as well. Maybe in the, there's some text, sort of upfront descriptor in that tab. At the end, I think a comment, just that staff will evaluate green infrastructure options, or like noting in there, in that paragraph somewhere, that green infrastructure is on the table. And ideally, there's a line in there that says, talks about GKY, talking about rates. It would be great to add a line there, "The city will commission a green infrastructure plan to identify opportunities to reduce needed investment in gray infrastructure." The main point is just to put something on that tab that flags that green infrastructure is a missing piece when we think about the capital costs of stormwater.
I certainly can revise that sheet 10-6, so when it goes forward to council, that's shown as revised. And certainly, the two points you made in the motion could be revised, and so I think the motion would still be fine, because it's presented as December 3rd and 18th, so we'd capture your changes for today in the motion.
Yeah, and I think, in terms of the motion, I think it's important, we want to, for me anyway, it's important to convey that it's not just that it's environmentally better to have green infrastructure, but it's an actual fiscal thing, if we're sinking money into non-green infrastructure solutions, is that not a prudent use of funds? So that's why I think we want to make sure that the fiscal aspect of it is also included, just so city council knows that we're not just concerned with the environmental side, but this is CIP, and we're talking about money, so. It would be unfortunate to not spend that money wisely.
I concur.
But, do other people have thoughts about these adjustments?
No, I support it, I think there's a lot of additional arguments that could be made, too, which is probably not appropriate, but for example, green infrastructure is really more of a long-term, because it's working with the environment, infiltrating water in place, as opposed to, you know, shunning it off someplace else, which is gonna be more sustainable over the longer term. So I think there's a lot of reasons why, you know, we can support this.
You guys have any comments? Is that, does that satisfy you? I mean, we talked a little bit before about, yeah, there's a lot you could say, but for the purposes of the motion, I think we're just trying to get the high level, like, it's important both environmentally and financially, so let's work on it. And I think we all realize this stormwater stuff is fairly fast-moving, and I thought in the last meeting when we brought up the green infrastructure, the staff was very receptive to that, so I assume we'll continue to see that evolve as these projects get developed.
Definitely, and Mr. Domenica helped me with the summary, and has added that to make sure it's clear with the task force's effort to have the GI policy and the project, so that's already in action or process.
Any other CIP related questions? I have one, but I can save that to the end.
Yeah, I just got some small ones. There was a lot of information in this notebook about the fire station doors. And I want to, what I think I understand from all of the text is that instead of the doors going up vertically, they're now gonna go horizontally. And apparently, a lot of people like this idea. What's the impetus of this? Are the current doors not working? I mean, this is $550,000, it sounds like it may be better, but I didn't really follow, like, why this was so pressing.
We do have significant issues with the doors, so the door replacement has been in the CIP planning efforts for several years. They tend to break down much more frequently, and if they don't go all the way up, then we're at risk of damaging the apparatus, the trucks. But even more so, they're actually catching on the gutters and the heaters that are over the door, and so we're then breaking the doors and the heaters, and so there've been a higher maintenance cost, and they're slower, so then the trucks are having trouble getting out. Arlington had made a policy decision for all their stations, they're replacing, and/or new stations will have the bi-fold horizontal doors.
And so this is.
And it allows the heater to be right over the door, which is improved when you're opening and closing it, because right now, when the door goes up, the heater is actually warping the doors, because it's now on top of the door. So it's, this is also a better design, lower maintenance long-term.
So it's mandated by Arlington when they do these deficiency studies? That's not, you should generally fix this, you must fix this?
The doors need to be fixed, and this is their framework and the current best practice.
Okay.
I did read through some of the email dialogue in there, and it does sound like there are some issues with installing them wrong, so hopefully, we're on the ball there.
Yep, and they have to install them, and they have to maintain them, so it'll be up to them to make sure they're not. We'll be monitoring it with Mr. Goff out of Public Works, who oversees that facility, but they will bear the financial cost if it's not done right.
And there's just a, you know, there's 10 items actually listed in terms of this fire station. This has been a ongoing list of deficiencies in this particular building. Are these, again, where do these 10 come from? I know it's spread out all the way to fiscal year 30, so it's not all happening at once, but are these just ongoing maintenance items, or this was a design flaw just that has consistently surfaced?
A bit of both. The windows that have been done in the past, and the HVAC, I would say, were underdesigned for a 24-by-7 facility. They were more residential in nature than commercial-industrial. Also, the new HVAC will be much more energy-efficient. The others are based on an assessment of the building, which they do on all of their fire stations, and start planning out because of the age of the facility for replacement. So things like the roof, the kitchen, the bathrooms, they're just reaching, some of it end of life, and some of it just the wear and tear of a 24-by-7 live-in facility.
So is your view that these are, you know, standard and reasonable? It's hard to tell, sitting here, whether or not this is just, you know, reasonable request or not reasonable request, I guess is the.
I would say they're reasonable, per our inter-jurisdictional agreement with Arlington. We have to have at minimum annual CIP meeting, so before they actually submit it, we sit down with their facilities and our facility folks, and review what they're forecasting and what the needs are, and we physically go to the station, so we're looking at the conditions.
And this is the type of thing, I mean, it seems like it's almost all debt-funded, I mean, with the exception of some.
There's two years.
It looks like it's mostly all debt-funded.
Yeah, it's all debt-funded, except for the two years that were not proposing funding, in '22 and '23, because of the upfront funding of the doors, so they can be efficient and do it all at once. Otherwise, it is debt-financed, and it is eligible.
Okay. And I remember a few years back, they bought a ladder truck, and I think at the time, they said they only last eight or nine years, but I don't see another ladder truck on here. Has that changed how trucks are?
Yes, we've switched over to, instead of purchasing them as capital, and then having to sell them, and have the trade-off of the auction to the new purchase. It's under the Arlington contract for leases now, so they're automatically replaced out, and so it's showing in the operating budget. When they hit a certain mileage, then the lease.
Cool.
Equipment's leased out, much more even funding as well, we can plan for it.
And then my other question relates to the school facilities reinvestment, the $360,000. That's marked as to be determined. What's the, what's the plan for something like that? It covered a couple of schools, and looked like projects that were fairly pressing.
So the original request for FY '21 was $750,000, and with the budget amendment for council's virtually-agreed revenue-sharing program, then 360,000's been, ah, 390, sorry, has been provided to the school board in FY '21 for capital. So we reduced their '21 ask, because they're getting the infusion in this current fiscal year. The other items, much of which they're asking for, are not debt-financable, they're not eligible, so they need to be PGO. And at this point, the schools have not determined a way to shift operating money over to capital to fund that, which is how we funded the general government's facility reinvestment, where there's $300,000 PGO every year. We actually reduced our operating budget. So the "to be determined" is still a discussion between the superintendent, the city manager, council, and school board, if there's a way to do that, or once they formalize the revenue-sharing agreement, that one-time revenue could go to the CIP.
Let me make sure I understand last sentence. So they, the school board, at this point, needs to solve this problem? Or, and then it sounds like the very end, you said, unless they don't, and then something's happening.
Well, if the school board can't determine a way to reduce operating budget and shift it over, the one way to fund it would be at the end of every fiscal year, when we true up the revenue, and it's split 50-50, which is in the verbal, virtual revenue-sharing agreement. It goes. Eventually, hopefully, that's a more permanent agreement, and then that annual split would fund capital projects here.
Okay.
And long-term, if they have a steady going, they won't have these spikes, and that should cover them. But even though it wasn't funded, I wanted to make sure the planning commission, the community, knew those were obviously facility reinvestment needs we need to address.
Yeah, so, I mean, in the one year, in 2021, $360,000 is not the biggest number. I suspect we'd have some surplus revenue to handle that, but it becomes a big number over the six years. I mean, now we're at over a million dollars, and.
Yeah. I think if they could have a steady infusion.
I'm sorry?
If they had a steady infusion of that 175, 150,000, which is their current estimates, then they could address them. What they've done to date is either, end of fiscal year, they're underspending, they've addressed, and this is the first year for the current fiscal year, they've gotten a direct allocation from the city.
Okay, it looks like largely everything else is accounted for, either through grants or PGO, or debt. So those were my real questions, so that's all I got.
Anybody else?
Yeah, to follow on that issue of the schools, these pages that are in tab six that relate to the schools' CIP, are those things that we would comment on, or is that just strictly FYI?
That's FYI, that's the school board adopted CIP. So for the process in which what's before you, then the specific Excel spreadsheet, six-three and two are what you're commenting on, there is some relation, obviously, because of the project, but they have a whole lot more information in there that, depending on what it is, is probably more appropriate to go directly to the school board.
Anything else? No? Not for me.
I just have a question more on process than substance, which is, defer to the wisdom of my more experienced colleagues on the planning commission, but I would find it helpful if we could take chunks of this, and go into more depth throughout the year, so that it's not all coming at us at once. I just, along with the CIP updates, with the blue-yellow.
The snapshot.
Dots. The snapshot. I would personally find it helpful if we could take one or two of these tabs, and go into a little bit more depth along with that as well, so we can sort of. And then, the annual update is more like what's changed since we last checked in on it, rather than what's changed since last year, just a suggestion.
Certainly can work with Mr. Schotter and the planning staff to try to have a more frequent touch base on a focused area. What I would be bringing, I think, would be what's adopted and what we're implementing. You would still need this formal process for the next six years, which would be a one-year add, but at least it would give you the foundation.
Yeah, I think most of us get that over the course of a couple of years, but we've, at least I felt that way in my first couple of years, like, maybe next year I'll understand 50% more of this. But it would be a good idea to maybe take some, a slow meeting in the middle of the year, and dive in on some of this, so it's a little easier to grasp at the next cycle. My question has to do with, you know, we put a lot of effort, and you guys do all the hard work, but this carefully laid-out matching up of funds and projects and all those other stuff, but where and when do we assess the staff's capacity to actually execute the projects in a timely manner, so that we don't either not get the things done on the schedule we're looking for, or even worse, somehow miss some window of funding availability? Like, is that, that's not really part of the CIP process, but I do feel like there are times when we aren't able to do some of the things that we've approved in the CIP, just because there's nobody to do them.
It is part of the CIP process, and then, of course, it does have spill over to the operating budget. Transportation is the one that we do the deepest dive on scheduling, because it is such a large amount. But this year, with adding stormwater, and then, you know, knowing we have other facilities, we do monitor that closely. It is a very aggressive, robust schedule. So for projects that you see starting in '21 or '23 or '25, that's why we've had to bump them out. We are still backlog with some of the old grants and projects, and so when trying to work them, you know, if you see at the end of the schedule in tab eight, there's a lot happening right now. I think we are in a better place, because we're gonna be bringing on infield construction site supervision. We've got more PMs working, we are tight at the front end, which is grant management and procurement.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, it seems like we've definitely increased our project management capacity, but are we increasing the other components at a similar rate? You know, and honestly, most of the messaging, like, if there's, if staff is concerned, like, we don't have much control over operating budget, but we can certainly lobby city council, like, hey, this is great that we have all these grants identified, but we don't have enough people to actually go and get them.
Yeah, certainly that would be something you, you know, you have the ability to add into your motion or not, depending on the will of the planning commission. We have, in the life of my working CIP, brought on the grant manager position, which we didn't have prior. There was a person in the position, Caitlin's holding, but that's a real key piece for all the drawdowns, invoices, grants, we would not be managing the grants without that. We've always had in DPW a contracts manager, and over the last year, we brought on a contract specialist to assist. But the core procurement office has one purchasing manager for the entire city, and then the contracts manager in Public Works is doing CIP, plus all the other contracts for picking up snow, and paving, and maintenance, and so forth. So that is one of the areas that we have been looking at, at a staff level, through the operating, to see what we could do to add. It is a bit of a pinch point right now, especially with the federal money under the grants.
Yeah, and that's one of my concerns, is some of these grants only have a certain window, right? I mean, you don't get them in in time, and then they go away.
Yeah, so the schedule here, especially for the transportation grants, is timed, so we don't lose the money. But if you want to accelerate it, or we hit a glitch, you know, it's just in time. You can accelerate a project with our current staffing ratio.
All right, is that, is this pressing enough that we, I mean, it's not in our current motion, we haven't really talked about it too much until just now, is that something we should consider trying to help out with in this CIP, or?
It is certainly a pinch point that we've raised several times in the operating budget. If you want to take action, the timing is good, because I will be transbending this to the city manager for the council presentation on March 9th.
All right. Well, I'd certainly be okay with adding a 10th item on our lengthy motion that, I don't know exactly how to word it, but highlights the need to fund the positions that help get the grants, and. Because, you know, a couple of years ago, the challenge was definitely with project management, we just didn't have enough people to run the projects, but it does seem like we've caught up there. But I have a business, and when we grow one part of the business, the other part doesn't grow, suddenly, that's the bottleneck, and I assume it's the same way for the city. Anybody have any thoughts on this item issue?
It's complicated.
Yeah, and obviously, we don't have a ton of particular sway here, but I always think of the bullets that we send along with the CIP recommendation each year as more of a, you know, just kind of make sure city council realizes what we're thinking about, and what we think is important, and honestly, highlighting some things that they may not consider, like this green infrastructure stuff. I think will have a huge impact down the road in a couple of years, as that become more of a focus. And I think similarly, if we raise this in our motion, at least, city council has to probably address it, and, you know, gives staff another chance, say like, hey, all this cool CIP stuff we're talking about, some of it's not gonna happen, or if one little thing gets delayed, or, you know, someone's out sick for a while, or whatever. And I know you guys don't, it's not like, it's not like you have to always hire full-time people, right? There's ways to contract out support in some of these areas, part-time, or.
Yeah, sometimes you can do part-time returns. Contracts, depending on the continuity and the ability to work multiple projects, sometimes it's better to either have embedded or staff, but we can do temp, term, part-time, full-time, and can charge staff time to the project, so it doesn't necessarily equate to increasing operating costs, and therefore, the tax base.
Yeah, so it could come out of the grant that they're.
Yes. Now, some of the older grants will have less flexibility to do that within, you know, a tight project with construction costs going up. But, for example, all the revenue-share grants and the transportation, traffic signal ones I mentioned, we included staff management, so we, and some contingencies, so hopefully, we can court it.
All right.
So I was, as you were describing it, I wrote a short sentence down, that's a starting point for your consideration, and then it could be modified, but number 10 could be, "Should adequately ensure staffing for delivery of projects as planned, including administrative and procurement functions."
That sounds succinct and accurate to me. Anyone have any trouble, any issue with including something like that?
No, I mean, it's a recommendation, along with what else we do on the CIP. It's pretty benign, as far as I'm concerned. I want to make sure we can execute these plans, a lot of grants, especially in transportation.
All right, I think we're close, anyone?
Just in terms, this is a super minor point, just in terms of wording, number 10, is it "City council should adequately," or "City management should adequately"? Who's the?
Well, this is our message to city council, right?
Yeah, your motion in its entirety goes in the proposed budget to council.
Yeah, so I think we're communicating to council.
The core motion starts off with, "I move the planning commission recommend that the city council approve, blah, blah, blah," and we've added, "And the following caveats," so just, justifications and caveats, so this is going to council.
Right, so I didn't, I don't remember exactly the wording of. So I didn't, I don't remember exactly the wording of your helpful addition, but, all my three minutes are up.
It's time to get up.
All right.
Can I, I want, before we move on to actually adopting this, I'm struggling to work through these numbers on the sewer utility and the stormwater. It makes a big jump in FY 2022. On the sewer utility, everything else is around a million dollars. And then in '22, it jumps to 10.8 million in terms of debt financed or in total for the sewer, 13.5. And I'm just, I'm just struggling to match it up to what's in this notebook and how we get to that number. And it seems that it's this plant capacity that's up on the screen, but I'm, the numbers aren't matching for me. So if you could help me with this.
For the Alexandria wastewater treatment plant capacity, that's 10.3. That is when staff is estimating we will need to purchase capacity. Some of that is for, you can see the, the numbers up above for our utilization. Some of it is planned for the Phase 1 of the Little City Commons and then Phase 2. We put it in FY '22 because we're still sorting out with Alexandria, can we purchase in tranches, so it doesn't have to be all at once? And then also with the project, these are rough staff estimates because we don't actually know all the types of fixtures that'll be in the development yet to get a more refined cost estimates for utilization. So the big jump is when we know we'll need to buy capacity. This is assuming the full capacity in one tranche. And it probably, we hope, will be more phased. But those discussions are undergo, underway by staff with Alexandria.
So this is likely, it's likely to happen in 2022? I'm not sure that the Little City Commons is coming online at that point. So you have to purchase it in advance?
It is still under negotiation. So since we didn't have a definitive agreement to purchase it in tranches, because some of it is the treatment plan itself is that capacity, and they're doing their capital work, so we have to time it. Certainly, we won't need it all at that point, for sure.
It's not even constructed at that point.
But that's why it's in FY '22 and not '21. We know we don't need it in '21. We know this is sort of the big picture we're looming and looking at. While we continue to refine it next year, when you see this, I would hope that it would be
Spread out.
over a couple of years.
You're just saying you have no idea what that might be, so you're just dropping it all in '22?
Yeah.
All right, that makes a lot more sense. Can you help me get to this 13.5 number, though? Because I, I'm not able to, in that year, I just, I just can't seem to get the numbers to line up, so I must be missing something.
For the availability, are you looking in Tab 3 or 10-3?
I'm looking at what you just keep showing on the screen, but also comparing it to the summary sheet, 3-1. It says in 2022, for the sewer utility, it's through the debt financing, the fees and pay-as-you-go, 13.5 million dollars. And I'm just struggling to get the math to work, that's all.
I could also have a math formula error, so let us.
The numbers are just spread out over a couple of pages, so I'm, it's likely, I'm, it's likely I'm not able to make them work, not that you made a mistake.
It is a lot of numbers.
And this is when I love having my spreadsheet in front of me with the formulas. I can double-check that, but the individual project sheets should roll up.
All right. It was such a big number, I was trying to make that work, but if you could check it, I guess. It doesn't change the outcome, though.
All right, cool. So we need someone to make the long motion, ideally with the addition of number 10 and Ms. Weiss's tweaks. But I'm sure we can sort out the details after the fact. But we need the general motion. Anybody up for saying a lot of words out loud?
I can say it, because I, oh.
No, but I don't have your adjustments.
I have my tweaks, I don't have Cindy's.
Then you should, you should do it.
When you get to 10, I can read mine if that's the will.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get her to read that.
And so you'll just read that when we get to it?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
Piece it together.
All right, good, so.
They put it up on the big screen, too.
Yeah, no, but I got to get my tweaks.
Tweaks. Which you can also work with Ms. Bazemore at the end to make sure it's all right.
Okay. So I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve pursuant to Section 6.19 of the city charter and Section 17.08 of the city code, the FY 2021-2026 Capital Improvements Program, CIP, as presented on February 3 and February 18, 2020, as summarized on CIP notebook pages 3-1, 3-2, 3-3, 3-4, 3-5, 3-6, and 3-7, based on the following justifications and caveats. One, the CIP is consistent with the adopted comprehensive small area and master plans. Two, the CIP approaches the citywide capital infrastructure and reinvestment needs in a holistic manner. Three, the CIP is enhanced through purposely planned and balanced reinvestment needs, funding options, and staff resources. Four, the CIP is fiscally responsive and compliant with adopted financial policies. Five, the CIP addresses long-term dedicated and sustainable funding for pay-as-you-go local funding for facility reinvestment and other capital needs to provide for fiscal balance of cash and debt financing. Six, the CIP provides sufficient match funding to leverage grants to address significant transportation needs. Seven, green infrastructure can reduce capital costs of stormwater infrastructure, and we are concerned about imprudent allocation of capital to stormwater projects in the absence of a green infrastructure plan. Funding the 2021-2026 stormwater CIP projects must integrate the accelerated development of green infrastructure policy and implementation plan as part of the updated watershed management plan efforts. Eight, concurrent with the FY '22 to '27 CIP development, the comprehensive plan recommendations, such as watershed management plan update, citywide green infrastructure policy and implementation plan, green procurement, infrastructure master plans should be completed. And nine, excuse me, strike the and. Nine, concur with staff recommendation for streetlight fixture type and locations consistent with adopted streetscape guidelines, POAs, and engineering technical standards as presented in Tab 8, page 8 to 15A. And 10.
Should adequately ensure staffing for delivery of projects as planned, including administrative and procurement functions, period.
All right. I'll second it. Seconded, any commentary thoughts on this before we have a vote? Seems like we're ready. All right, Ms. Bazemore?
Mr. Rincon?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
All right, another CIP in the books.
Thank you very much, commissioners, for your time and input.
Thank you. All right. Look at that, only eight minutes behind schedule. Well done, guys. Brings us to number 7A, planning commissioners' reports, if we have any.
Oh, I have a couple.
Ms. Teetz with some reports, let's hear them.
For Rexon Park, I want to mention that they are looking for grand marshal applications, well, for your nominations now.
I've made a nomination.
Have you? That's very good. So if anyone has someone they thought would make a great grand marshal, please do the nomination. And I would just suggest, from seeing the process last year, that you have backup letters for your nominations, like additional people writing.
That competitive, huh?
Just threw a name in the hat.
A lot of them come in with additional nominations. I mean.
Just Russian hacks of our.
Yeah, just the people are trying, you know.
All right.
Just on the Fellows property, the house and the barn go down soon. Obviously, they're going to level that area and have it parking for the library and everything, and that the, they're definitely going to start doing the public meetings for the master park plan in April, so it'll probably be a meeting in April, May. They'll work on the park plan over the summer, bring it out to the public in the fall, and then eventually it'll come to us. So, but yes, you know, with the Fellows property, we're not putting a lot of infrastructure in there and because we want to hold it for future use, so it's more likely to be something like trails and maybe some informational items. Some people, and include myself, think it'd be fun to put in edible plants, like blueberries and like blastberries that the kids from CJ could come over and pick. So anyways, we'll see how it goes with that.
Did, how many parking spaces can you put in there?
I don't know. So they, they, in the process of getting invasive.
It's a decent slope, the grade there is not.
Well, the urban forestry department has been getting rid of the invasive, so we were talking about that at a habitat restoration meeting. So in the process of getting rid of invasives, we found out that the entire driveway is circular. People didn't know that. And we found another piece of driveway that went from the circle back to the barn, so there's.
I did see that, I actually don't tell anybody, walked through there yesterday.
So now they have that, they know they have that circle and they have that, and I think they're just going to, like, the feeling is they're just going to kind of, when they level everything, they're going to get graded and put a little gravel down and at least have some parking there for staff and for other people. But I, I don't know if the public's parking there as much as the staff's parking there.
Yeah.
So anyway, but it's all temporary, I mean, why the library is there temporarily and, and because the, you know, as you've seen from the CIP, we don't have money to do anything in Fellows right now anyway, so we need to do the planning first. You know, and I forgot to bring this up, but I thought it was interesting, the CACT asked the police department to find out about the number of accidents in the city because we were just curious, because there have recently been a pedestrian accident at Little Falls, which I see people almost getting hit at Little Falls all the time.
Two people who work for me witnessed that accident, it was terrible.
I almost feel like it needs to be, all three lights need to be red during the time that people are trying to cross there, because unfortunately, they have a green light as people are trying to make left turns out of there, and I think it just makes it a little bit jumbled. But anyway, you know, the, the data that came back, the, the most recent data they had collected was 2018. So it turns out they have to collect it every year and turn it into VDOT. And, and 2019 report isn't ready yet. But it wasn't anything that you wouldn't be surprised about, like most, there's a lot more accidents that, like, Broad and Washington and West.
Saw one of those yesterday.
There you go. But luckily, most of them, you know, are cars. I mean, there wasn't that many pedestrian-oriented kind of things, or bike, you know, biking cars. It's mostly car-on-car action, so.
I'm still waiting on my first scooter accident.
So anyway, the CACT is going to look at that and see if there's some suggestions they can give if some intersections need some work. And I think, like I said, I, I personally think Little Falls and Seven, there needs to be sudden done there to make it easier to cross there because it's just not safe with left turners, I don't think, anyway. Because when you're coming off of Little Falls, turning left onto Seven,
I guess.
It's really hard to see people.
It's not hard to see.
Well, I, at night it is, I've.
This happened at noon.
Well, I know. I'm just saying, at night, several times, people with dark clothing were like at the island, and I didn't see.
I'm not saying it's not dangerous, I'm just saying it's not hard to see. People are just bad drivers. We should do something, but it's.
But I haven't hit anyone, but I'm just saying, I've seen people, and it's been at the very last minute because of what they were wearing, it was late at night. But that's mostly because I'm coming from this meeting.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that is all I have.
Any other reports?
Oh, I have one more thing, sorry. I just wanted to bring this up because I thought it's something that's kind of bothered me, so.
So you're taking the Brett approach of personal grievances?
I am. Well, no, no, this is not personal grievances. So up at the high school, if you've ever noticed, at the corner of Hickok and Seven, there's lots and lots of above-ground boxes, electrical boxes. So it turns out underground there is a giant underground station that's responsible for routing electricity for like this whole area from up there at the, from the high school down past West Street. So it's underground, but because it's where it is, you can't plant like trees or anything over it. And so the developer for the West, for the project up there, doesn't want to have that on the property anymore. So they are, have been looking for another place to put it, and they're going to try to put, they want to put it in the Weston Park, which means they tear up all of the native plantings on this one side of the park, and they put this thing in. And then you can still plant some stuff on it, but no shrubs, nothing that has deep roots. It also means, once that's in there, it precludes the park from being resigned on that side of the park. And I'm personally, I'm, Rexon Park is not very happy about it. I am also not very happy about it. I think there are some other places this could go, rather than take up part of one of our few parks that we have.
Why do they want to move it?
Excuse me?
Why do they want to move it?
I think the developers want to move it because wherever it is, you can't have anything really substantial on top of it.
They want a grocery store there.
Well, they want a grocery store there, but I'm just saying, like, within, they don't want to, it could be moved within their project. And the thing is, when you move it, they're going to have to dig up Broad Street, and the park won't be usable for that time because they're going to have to dig it up and bring in conduits from the conduits that are running down Seven into the park. And the other thing we're concerned about is that the initial drawings talked about, like changing some pavers just to asphalt and stuff like that, which I don't know if, I think that's something that they don't, well, that's not going to happen. We're going to expect it to go back to the way it was.
Yeah, well, that sounds not good. Do we have any, do we, as the planners, have any?
Doesn't the city have to sign off on that if it's in our right of way?
I think the city does have to sign off on it. I think that.
What should we do if they're going to go to our park?
I.
Can I bury something in the park?
I, I, I like, I mean, this is, like you said, this came up in Rexon Park. It hasn't formally been, they've just been given like a work session on it. I mean, it hasn't formally come to them for a comment. And at this point, I just wanted to put it out there so we're aware of it as well.
Can we ask planning staff to just give us and look into that and give us an update on what actually is going on, so we know? It's hard to comment without knowing all the details.
I seem to recall this came before city council, either a work session or an actual meeting.
Yeah, I imagine work session, because at least what Rexon Park is being told, this is a planning thing, and nothing is, but this is where they want to put it. And so I guess they're trying to get final approval.
I recall the discussion.
What I don't understand is like, if you look at the W O N D trail there, there is a lot of space between the trail and like where the bridge is and underneath the bridge that are gardens right now, which, there are memorial gardens, Vipis House and everything. But, but I don't see why we couldn't put it over there because we could put most of those plantings back, and we wouldn't have this permanent structure in a park. Because if we wanted to expand anything in that park, that section of the park would no longer be usable.
Yeah.
So I, I just, I thought, to me, it seems like there's a lot of places along the W O N D right there that could have been used instead.
Well.
But anyway.
If staff could get us some sort of information on that, that'd be outstanding.
I just wanted to mention, because I don't think people have been hearing about it.
I had not heard about it.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it, sorry.
Moving on, correspondence, I didn't see any correspondence. Maybe an invitation to some EDA wayfinding thing. Thanks for the invite.
I think I'm going. I think as the new liaison that falls in my.
Have a good time.
On my agenda.
I mean, I went to an early meeting with the wayfinding, so it was interesting. So I think it'll be interesting to get the update. I may go, I don't think so, but maybe.
I'm going to go for Vipis.
I put it on my calendar.
Sorry about it.
You guys got it covered. All right, do you guys have any sort of a director's report?
Yes, and I wanted to note that there is an updated version of the director's report that was distributed at the dais. Staff had intended to post an updated version on Granicus last week, and there was an issue where the updated file hadn't actually been saved. And so the one change in that is in terms of the schedule for the W O N D Trail Crossings project. And the change is that the 100% plans would be completed in May 2020, but due to a timing of staffing availability, the project wouldn't be advertised until July of 2021.
See, that's a good example, right? A little more staff and get this stuff done a year earlier?
And then just a couple other things to highlight in the director's report, going back to the beginning of the report. At the February 3, 2020 meeting, the planning commission reviewed the preliminary work plan and assigned champions. So if, looking through Attachment 1, if anything is not correct, certainly let us know if any of the assignments weren't right. The EDA, our Economic Development Division Quarterly Report, is included in Attachment 2. The CACT, they took their annual report to council on February 10. That's included in Attachment 3. And then for Greenway Downs, staff held a work session with city council on February 3 to discuss the possible amendments to the zoning code. And some of the questions and concerns raised from council were related to the importance of moving the proposed code amendment. of moving the proposed code amendment forward and possible implications that could be associated with the code amendment. Uh, so staff is recommending uh, that the assigned planning commission champion uh, for that work item, uh, reach out to council members to talk about that further.
That's awesome.
Okay.
You could encourage them to read our report.
And then finally, the last thing to highlight in the director's report is that on February 10th, uh, 2020, uh, council unanimously approved the updated materials for the Environment and Natural Resources chapter of the comprehensive plan. So it was a lot of good work um, from staff and various boards and commissions and planning commission. So it was a good uh, opportunity to celebrate that success as well.
Thanks for that update. Uh, the W N O D Trail Crossing project reminded me of something. That's a separate project from the dual trail thing, but that dual trail thing, after the, when that came up, I had a couple of neighbors reach out to me who live adjacent to the trail, who expressed having not gotten any information about it. And I encouraged staff early on to make sure, all these people that think that half their backyard is, they don't realize it's a park, they're gonna need some uh, help understanding why it's a good plan. So I don't know, I don't know where that whole project stands, but, and I'm not telling you, saying you guys aren't doing it. But I, I will reiterate that there are some people that are going to be surprised and unhappy. And the more we can communicate with them about the big picture plan, the better. Um, and the people I talked to, they're partially surprised about the, you know, they use some of that space and they're wondering how that's gonna be later. But they are also worried about the stormwater solution. I think the plan is good overall, but these are people that are in a space where stormwater isn't an issue and they're worried that changes could accidentally make stormwater an issue for them, uh, for unnecessary reasons, since it's not really an issue on the trail at that spot. So all that to say, next time you guys talk about that in the meeting, just pretend you hear me speaking in your ear, hey, we should go tell the people that live adjacent to the trail about this, because they're gonna get upset at the last minute and that would be unpleasant.
I have a follow on. Question on that same topic with the uh, trail crossing. So I recall there were, there were four. Two of them were gonna have stop signs on the bike trail and two weren't. And it was kind of left open as a question. I'm just wondering if that got resolved, since we're, we appear to be going ahead with the planning.
I would have to check back with Jeff Sykes, who's the case planner for that. Um, and I can do that and get back to you.
That's another one where public information might be good to, to be shared.
Yeah, I have one question um, on the E D O report, which you probably can't answer, but maybe Tim could answer. So what do these murals look like? Because there's been very little public outreach on this. And I understand it because it's on a private building wall that they don't have to come through the-
Mr. Brown's Park?
Which is normally what they would have to do.
They just had some depictions. They all had balloons. There were various motifs with balloons.
Why are we doing balloons? We're not Napa Valley.
I'm just telling you. I'm just a messenger.
It was Tim's idea. It was Tim's idea. He loves balloons.
Well, I, I, I would just, personally, I, I really don't, I really dislike their non-public approach to this. And I, and they're basically using a loophole to put a mural that goes in a public place, because it's on a private wall, they're going around the public process.
We could put up a very skinny like billboard in front of it.
That's right. Good.
We could do anything, because we could do something in the park itself. But I don't know, I just, I just want to just point. I, I'm sure the mural will be fine and I think it's nice that we're putting a mural up. But to do this, because, you know, basically using the fact that it's a private wall facing a public park, to say it doesn't have to, because it's a public art process, is a real shame. Because when that goes up and people are gonna ask, how did that get picked? And they're gonna find out it was done basically-
What was, what were the three choices? It talks about there were three choices.
We don't know. All balloons. That's what Tim said.
Balloons?
There is balloons.
Like hot air balloons or like children's balloons?
No, hot air balloons with-
Napa Valley balloons.
Virginia's for Lovers and phrases like that on them.
Who is the, I mean, how did they find this artist, Craig English?
Uh, they mentioned it, but it's been a couple of months, so I've forgotten.
No public process really. So there we go. I'm sure the E D O minutes puts the justice. And also, I just want, Mr. Craster, I, what I understand from what happened with the work session in Greenway Downs, um, what I read was just that there was a feeling that um, people were putting addition on their houses with no problem. So maybe we really didn't need this overlay. So I-
Well, this is a council member Connolly who lives there.
Yeah.
Said, you know, she walked around and she looked and she saw a lot of additions. And so her conclusion was this might, this overlay might have been a good idea 10 years ago, but it seems to have-
No longer be-
Diminished in terms of value.
So anyway, I, you might want to go back and look at that-
Okay.
Work session. Um, I don't think they have minutes for work sessions, do they? They just have a film.
No, it's just in a video.
Just a video, yeah. And to see, and then maybe talk to, to Ms. Connolly, because she, she lives there. So if she's against it, I think it's pretty much dead in the water. But then at least we can take it off our list.
I mean, is there like data to back up the fact that there have been a lot of new construction or additions in Greenway Downs in the last-
It's all visual.
No, this is visual.
Anecdotal. I mean, we could look at that to see what they, what, yeah, maybe we have a little look at that.
In either way, I mean, you know, well, there's data and then there's also the question of what hasn't happened because of the way the rules are now.
Also, discussion along the lines that we had with unintended consequences and not knowing whether the changes would encourage teardowns and things like that. There's discussion along those lines.
Okay.
Well, whatever we do, we should either encourage them to do it or-
Get it off.
Move on. Because having it be something that we're gonna somehow do someday is pointless if city council does not-
Right.
See that future, so.
Exactly.
All right. Done with all that, on to work session items. We've got an early draft of one of the more exciting comprehensive plan chapters. Right? Is that what that is?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Uh, so the request before the commission tonight is to provide input on an update to the Community Facilities chapter of the comprehensive plan. Specifically, staff is looking for input on the questions raised in lines nine through 14 of the staff report. Uh, does the draft outline cover all appropriate facility and service elements? Do other facility and service elements need to be included? Uh, understanding that detailed implementation plans can be developed later on, uh, does the proposed depth of analysis meet the community's needs? And then finally, does the proposed public engagement plan uh, meet the community's needs for review and input? Uh, so again, tonight, uh, staff is looking for some feedback on the draft vision statement, uh, the chapter outline and proposed schedule. Uh, Community Facilities, Utilities and Public Services um, encompass the physical infrastructure and governmental support systems of the city. It includes such things as water, sewage, uh, stormwater systems, uh, as well as fire and rescue, uh, schools, the library and government offices. Uh, and so as drafted, uh, the Community Facilities chapter, it would outline the city's strategies uh, to meet these water, stormwater and sewer infrastructure needs, as well as public health and safety, uh, the schools and library needs and other government services. And so as the city uh, just updated its demographics uh, chapter uh, last August, uh, now is a great time to follow up uh, and evaluate what the city will need in terms of facilities and services to meet and support uh, the, the projected demographic increases. Uh, consistent with some other recent comprehensive plan updates, uh, staff will evaluate the city's progress against goals and objectives from the 2005 uh, version of the plan. And then staff will also, uh, will be doing that analysis as they're meeting with other departments to evaluate future needs. Uh, so this is something still to be done. Um, and staff has also already gone through and identified some best practice, practices, uh, looking at a number of exemplary plans, uh, in chapters from around the country. And those are summarized uh, in attachment three. Uh, the draft vision statement uh, is in line 71 to 75 of the staff report. Uh, and so right now, it's to maintain and evolve the city's utility infrastructure, education system, public safety, delivery and government operations to maintain a high quality of life today and prepare for the conditions of tomorrow, included expected population and employment growth, changing demographic profiles, increasing expectations for technology integration and changing environmental conditions. Uh, so this is an item that would be looking for feedback uh, from planning commission tonight. Uh, in terms of public engagement, uh, it's intended that the public engagement for this chapter will be tailored to the chapter content. So unlike other chapters that have been updated recently that have relied more heavily on public meetings and surveys in order to inform, inform the content, uh, it's envisioned that this chapter uh, would have more emphasis on engagement with uh, different staff groups, uh, specific departments, public work especially, um, and also uh, uh, input from the boards and commissions. Um, but again, getting uh, your thoughts on that approach uh, tonight. Uh, so going off of um, that approach, the timing would be uh, to hold a kickoff with city council in March. A work session uh, with the planning commission to touch base again in April. Uh, and then have review of the draft chapter by boards and commissions in May and June. And then uh, come back for action uh, in September.
All righty. So you started off with three main points. Do people have any comments on these points?
I have a couple. Um, only because we put electrical service in there and I read the best practices and this is something, should it not be electrical and maybe gas services? I mean, gas is a big part of things that we use in the city as well, for heating and all kinds of fun stuff. And every now and then, um, it seems like a house blows up, so it'd be good to have that in there. Unfortunately. Um, and the other thing is in the, um, and also I, I just want to say, I like, I like the beginning of the draft, the visuals, the way it was gonna look and the, I thought the um, sections were appropriate. But um, also with um, where was it? Public buildings, it said library and schools. Should, shouldn't it also say like city hall and um, the, the yard, um, Gordon Row? Facilities, so other public facilities?
Yeah, we can expand that to include all public facilities.
I think it should. I'm trying to think what else we have. Oh, well, I guess it doesn't count that the, the Miller House replacement. Um, because we're not really running that anymore. But anyway, it's just, you know, I definitely think all the, the public buildings should be in there.
I mean, I think the, the stormwater and the, a little bit related to that, the sanitary sewer stuff is probably gonna be the big issue there. I think the work of the task force will probably inform a lot of that portion of the chapter. I mean, I think that's gonna be the big issue there is the, you know, sort of the, the woeful state of our stormwater infrastructure. And, you know, so really, and so I think that those will, I think maybe dovetail nicely. But I think that's gonna wind up being the most, I'm guessing that'll have the most discussion. And to the, to the extent that our sanitary sewer system also has some significant deficiencies in certain parts of town, um, related to backups and that type of thing, I think, you know, that, mostly related to, you know, stormwater events too. But um, so I think those two will be the most significant. I think the other stuff will probably be more incremental updates, right, of previous plans. You know, I mean, our, our electric and gas and potable water infrastructure is probably, I don't know the state of the water infrastructure, but I guess, um, I don't imagine the other, there's, there's a lot of room to expand. I think the city's fully served for those things and to the extent, ongoing maintenance needs to happen, but, but, you know, I'm sure those, those, those should be done. But I think that the, yeah, the, the stormwater is gonna be the key. So whatever needs to, you know, be expanded from previous versions of the plan on stormwater, I think, is what we need to look at. And I guess the task force is timely in the sense that it'll be, it'll be hopefully coming up with some solutions to that or some ideas about what needs to be done. So that's my, that's my two cents. I think it's, you know, this is, this is a nuts and bolts kind of chapter, but it's actually quite timely in the sense of what's, you know, the focus on stormwater and, and to the extent we can look at ways to improve our, the way we handle stormwater and treat stormwater. Uh, I think, you know, we should look to have that part of the chapter especially be, be innovative and look at some out of the box um, type of solutions. Um, everything from things that are done on, you know, individual properties to, to other larger issues that we have in the city.
Yeah, I'll mirror those comments. I mean, this is, th- those are the two areas that I want to see. I, uh, and really stormwater specifically, I think, um, to understand and be able to uh, look at this chapter in a few months and say, this is, this is our plan and this is our goals. And these are, this is what we can, can achieve and what we can't, uh, will be really helpful in terms of making decisions about development and, and actions and giving the community some guidance that says, this is, this is how we handle this going forward. It's a long-term project. Uh, I think uh, the water, uh, the water chapter, large, or water section stays somewhat the same. But this was, I think the last one was written prior when we used to um, own the water system. So I think the wording is gonna be significantly different, but in terms of our, uh, as Brent said, the, you know, the service is gonna be the same. And I don't know that we have any major actions, but I think it's gonna have a, a very different read than the 2005 version. That's all.
I actually question the wisdom of doing this chapter now in the absence of a climate risk assessment. I know we had thought about doing that later in the year, but as I checked through the sections, we're looking at infrastructural elements that within, you know, if we're looking at 2030, 2040 goals, our infrastructure is likely to be significantly and possibly materially impacted by rising temperatures and increasing precipitation. Um, and uh, without having done that climate risk assessment to really understand our current infrastructure and its ability to withstand increased heat that's gonna increase road infrastructure, that's gonna increase our contributions to rail infrastructure. Um, you know, our heat, just to, the, just to give you an example, extreme heat days from 1981 to 2010, we averaged nine in Falls Church per year. Those are days over 95 degrees. Uh, from 2020 to 20, to 2039, we're gonna go up to 18. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but that stresses HVAC infrastructure and public facilities. It structures, it stresses the electrical grid. Um, if electricity goes down because of brownouts or whatever, do we have a cooling center in place? Do we have the right infrastructure? Um, have we looked at the human health impacts? Is public safety will be materially impacted if there's another severe storm event? Um, so anyway, having looked through these sections, I actually think we're missing, like the evaluation of needs piece in particular, we haven't done it effectively, if we haven't done a climate risk assessment, looking at the physical impacts of climate change on our infrastructure.
What is the status of doing a climate risk assessment?
At the uh, council's um, work plan meeting, it didn't get enough dots to uh, make the cut.
The reason why I ask, I think that's smart, but I also think this chapter hasn't been updated in a long time. And if we're talking about not updating it for two or three years, I think we're better off updating it now and revisiting it. But if it's like, no, we're gonna do a climate assessment thing in, you know, August, then sure. But I, that's the, the challenge I see. I don't-
Well, and once, I mean, we can update at will. Like if we did one, we could immediately update this chapter or ask for it to be updated, but-
And, and you're supposed to do it every five year. I mean, this has been a total rewrite this whole, you know, last four or five years. But it's supposed to be done every five years and we took a totally different approach. And uh, this is now going on 15 years. Uh, in theory, once we have that assessment that's happened, just as part of our um, process, these should be, these should go much, much simpler. As soon as we finish, we're gonna re-up, look at these chapters. Uh, I'd hate to wait for that climate assessment.
Is like one of our biggest goals in this thing.
Well, and I, and I would say regardless, I mean, it does seem like, whether or not we have the answers as we're rewriting it, addressing how that assessment could impact all the things we're writing would be super valuable to do at this stage. But again, like that's where I was saying, if, if this thing is coming soon, sure, maybe we can kick this, pause this one. But it doesn't sound like there's any particular note.
And for stormwater, I mean, we're already having issues with, we already can't handle, you know, the, the, the current state, you know, even the change over the last 30 to, you know, 50 years. I mean, since a lot of the infrastructure was first installed in the city, I mean, it's already substandard, you know, with increasing development and additional impervious cover and increasing rainfall events. And so, I mean, so last summer was kind of like a, you know, a wake-up call that there could be more events like that. So I think, I think we can, I think it's right. There's still some wisdom in, in evaluating where we're at now. And I think there's some, there's some general consensus on projections into the future. So I don't think that the risks are that unknown uh, for a city of our size, you know, now. And we kind of, I think we can see the trends and the trajectory. So I think, you know, I don't know. I think there's still some benefit to updating the, you know, taking a look at it now, especially considering how long it's been since we've looked at it, even in the last 15 years. There have been changes, both increased development in the city and also in, right, increasing intensity of, of events. And um, so specifically rainfall, I mean, there are other issues perhaps, you know, as far as temperature, but I mean, I think we can all see the increasing rates of rainfall and- I think we can all see the increasing rates of rainfall, and, and that, that trend's reflected, you know, throughout the region, so, I, yeah, I think there's still wisdom in, in doing it now. And especially, like I said, with the stormwater task force meeting this year, I think, I think using some of that work and, and having that incorporated, I think, is, is a wise decision. And, and it's advantageous, and we should take advantage of that.
So do we know, has Arlington done this? I'm assuming Fair, Fairfax has done this, or anyone else done a climate risk assessment?
I don't know if Arlington has. I know DC has, and we might be able to copy and paste some of their insights in terms of infrastructural.
Yeah, because I think it's very common. So I think that that would be a request of staff, is that they see if other localities, including Washington DC, have these climate risk assessments, and that we review that as we're putting together materials for this. Because I'm pretty sure that the climate risk assessment, and Arlington's gonna look at the same factors we would have to look at, since we're in close to the same watershed of the Potomac River, and we're in the same area in terms of temperature. And I think that, so we should be able to pull stuff from that, that we can add to our report. And I think also that we should emphasize in this report that we need to do our own climate risk assessment as soon as possible, and make that like a primary goal over and over again.
Yeah, that, that's where I would go with it, is that there's some, yeah, some opportunities in this to say that this is a missing piece. Um, and then in addition, that when we ultimately make the motion, that this is, this is based on, um, our understanding prior to doing this assessment. It's not an argument about should we, should or should we not do it? I think we should absolutely do it, it's gonna be really important. But then in the motion, as part of our recommendation, saying this is a priority that needs to happen. And then at that point, we can reassess, you know, the elements that change. But we're, we're trying to, my view is that we're trying to go from 2005 to 2020, and that effort's worthwhile, and not to hold it up over this piece that ultimately needs to happen, and once it happens, to revisit this chapter.
I mean, I guess I, I see the, the merit of that. I guess I also, sort of the flip side, is we've gone so long without one. I don't know why city council didn't get dots. They might have gotten, not given dots to that topic because didn't understand what's involved with a climate risk assessment.
What it impacts.
What it impacts, how it connects to our spending, how it connects to our infrastructure design requirements, our CIP. So that might be the kind of thing that's worth revisiting.
There were a lot of things on the boards, and we weren't allowed to explain why our item was better than the other items. Or I think that one would have done better. But, you know, it's, it's, it's the way that process was done, is people listed things, but you really couldn't explain the value exactly.
I mean, just, just sort of context, I mean, and other municipalities that have done climate risk assessments, it's gone down to the level of, you know, our infrastructure, the current exists, infrastructure is designed under past climatic conditions, and under, you know, a business-as-usual greenhouse gas emissions trajectory. You know, our infrastructure is meant to survive in a world like this. Our greenhouse gas emissions trajectory is going up like this, and there's a material impact on maintenance costs. And there's a break-even point at which implementing different types of interest, infrastructure design considerations makes sense.
Yeah, I guess to your point about it's gone so long, what's the big deal if we don't update it now? And I guess what I'm saying is, I think by going through an update process now, and having it sprinkled throughout with reminders that, hey, we don't actually know this yet, we know there's stuff out there, that might actually help us get some progress on that, versus trying to get them to realize that's important and then update it. But I also think staff's ready to go, I think it's a long process, so we could, you know, we could get into the, a more complete first draft, and then decide like, okay, now's the time to wait until we can fill in these blocks and really put some pressure on city council. I think a lot of ways we could go from there.
Yeah, and I still think we can pull from other, if any other localities, including DC have done this, then we should definitely look at it.
I think Fairfax is doing it now.
Is it?
I think Fairfax has a process that's currently underway, you know, as part of their new climate, they have like a new climate energy environmental office, and I think they're spearheading that.
Okay, so there's, we should be taking those lessons that they've learned and use them.
Yeah, and so it'd be interesting, because I could see us getting to the first draft and saying like, yeah, it is, it would be silly to finish this off without more information.
Do we have a sense of what that entails? I don't even know, is this a six-month study? Is this a year, is it a, a week?
Takes 30 years.
It depends.
Somewhere between 30 and 40.
Uh, I mean, it depends on the scope and the scale of, of the, I mean, some of these things can, I'm working on one right now that's gonna take two months. So it just sort of depends on how you design it.
Maybe you should put a proposal together.
Call Cindy back in for a CIP.
Can we have a quick change?
Yeah, you know, also, you know, I realized, and like, I'm assuming in the section on like electrical and things like that, we reference our agreements with the different utilities, because I think, I would be interested in knowing what's in some of our agreements based on that, because we have to, you know, we should be talking about how we negotiate those and what we're getting from them, because there's a lot of negotiation involved.
To Cindy's point, I think we're still trying to sort out what our, you know, what our sewage treatment capacity is. I know we get some from Arlington and some from Fairfax or something. I think we're still trying.
Alexandria.
Alexandria, I think we're still trying to figure that out. So, uh, yeah, that would be, I think that'd be useful.
Yeah, right, like a long-term look at where, how we're gonna deal with those capacity issues.
Right, especially as they will evolve with our climate change.
Yeah, understanding Dominion's climate resilience plans would be helpful, is what I point, does their.
More coal, burn more coal.
Just Northern Virginia Regional Commission has been doing some work. I don't think they've gotten to the modeling piece, but Climate Impact Lab has gotten county-level data for Falls Church and probably for Fairfax. So there's data out there that we probably could draw on, and I see the merit. I mean, there's a lot to be said, as, I'm persuaded by your, your argument that we should move ahead.
Is it gonna affect the firehouse? That's what I want to know.
I think the main thing is, it gives us a chance to talk about it a lot, and that's important.
One of my, I don't know how this factors into anything practically speaking, but, um, you know, I've lived in Falls Church for 12 years now, and it's been, it's remarkable how much of our infrastructure has come to end of life all at the same time, without a lot of forethought, not to blame our predecessors, but I would love the chapter to somehow attempt to prevent that from happening to our kids and grandkids. You know, I mean, I think, you know, I think, I think you get in a time machine, you go back 20 years, if we had been investing a lot more in the stormwater. I mean, part of it's changing the environment, but, and growing population, but part of it's just, it's all wearing out. Buildings are all falling apart at the same time. Those are very predictable things, buildings aren't gonna last forever. So if the, if the chapter can somehow acknowledge that it, that without sort of consistent investment over time, we're gonna, we're gonna hit another tipping point, maybe decades down the road, but it's just, yeah, it'd be annoying if we were responsible for that.
Yeah.
A lot of the city's infrastructure was built when the city rapidly suburbanized all at the same time.
Right, so we're going, we're going into Falls Church City 2.0, let's, let's be smarter about it.
I think the good thing, like, we only did, as an older envi, you know, older community, everything went in at the same time. Then, um, we became a separate city from Fairfax County in 1950, so all that happened at the same time. We built a bunch of stuff right away, and so that puts it in a bad position. But the good news is, is because we didn't save any money in the 90s, when we had money for this, and they kept cutting the tax rate instead of saving money, we have slowly fixed things over like 20 years, so everything is spread out now.
Yeah, but now it's all falling apart, you know, we need.
I know.
Schools, new library, new city hall, everything at the same time.
All that came up, but I'm talking about like the sewer and the storm drain, that's been like a 15-year process.
Yeah.
The Band-Aids, yeah.
Sort of.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of your, your third bullet point, um, I think you're right that most of the public engagement for stuff like this is with, with staff and boards and commissions, but clearly, things, I mean, this talks about things like schools and libraries. So I do think, and I'm, and looking at this, I assume that the, you're getting pretty far down here, number four, May, June, trying to get it finalized in September before, you know, because we have a work session in April, but public can't comment on that. So I, I think that's probably fine, that the pub, the main public commentary comes in at the boards and commissions review, but, um, and I know it's basically impossible to get the public engaged early, but I do, I do expect some people in public would have input on this, so.
On stormwater, they will.
Well, I think you're gonna have to, right, the, the schedule needs to follow that, look at what that stormwater task force.
Stormwater, I'd love, loop into boards and commissions at this point, but.
Right.
I wonder if, should we, should we not have like one public meeting with comments before we get to action?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I would just say one.
And not many people show up, but maybe a couple of passionate people would come and chime in.
Yeah.
Right, and of course, uh, the public is always encouraged to submit written comments at any point during the planning process. So that's something else that we can continue to emphasize for those that want to be involved.
Yeah.
Even if we turn the April planning commission meeting and do it not in work session, but do it in, do something at the work session night, have a public part of it where they could comment.
That's true.
I just think we need, it would be nice to have one time where they could actually speak.
Yeah, we could.
People don't want to write, they want to speak.
Yeah, we could have a brief part in the public meeting, and then do the hard work in the work session, that'd be fine. Other thoughts, everyone?
I, I support a public meeting. I had a couple other smaller things. The draft, the vision statement and the staff report was different from what was in the draft chapter.
That was a test, you passed.
And I prefer the one in the staff report, although I would recommend, um, instead of changing environmental conditions, just put a finer point on it, and say something like, and a changing climate, including increased temperatures and precipitation.
The world is ending, you throw that in there.
Yep, 10 years, gotta get it right. And, yeah, I think, I think that was it. Yes, those two small changes. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, my last question was, I think we have education system in the vision, but I don't remember seeing a chapter on education. So where does that, I mean, a section on education?
It's the school section and the facilities.
Yeah, under public buildings, but I, I think.
I, I think we would be changing the public building section to public facilities, and then it would be.
Oh, I see, okay. I failed that test.
B-plus. All right, does, you guys have enough to go on? Any other thoughts? All right, moving right along, 12 minutes past the schedule. West End Small Area Plan, a little bit beefier than the last time we saw it. You guys misunderstood the first time we saw it. I was asking questions like, that's next time. So now ask all those questions. All right, I read every, every other word of it.
Okay, so, uh, the request tonight is for the planning commission to review and provide feedback on the draft West End Small Area Plan, and then looking at the three questions raised in lines six through eight of the staff report. Are the draft vision statement and goals compelling and responsive to community needs? Do additional elements or issues need to be included? And what are the commission's strategy and action priorities? The, uh, chapter, uh, the, two of the chapters were last presented at a December 9th work session with city council, EDA, and planning commission. And so changes that have been made to the first two chapters are shown in blue text in the draft plan. Uh, and then the chapters following that are all new text, since the planning commission last saw the information. Lines 15 through 21 of the staff report highlight the comments and staff responses that were heard during the December 9th work session. And then, uh, in terms of timing, uh, the plan is to move forward to a city council work session on March 2nd. Boards and commissions, um, march to April, possibly going into May. Community meeting on, in April, and then come back for planning commission and council work sessions in May, and then actions in June. Uh, there was a presentation in the packet materials, but it's largely the same presentation that was presented to the commission at the December 2nd, and then at the joint work session on December 9th. I can go through it if you all would like. Otherwise, we can use the time to just discuss the material, which is really what staff is looking for too, tonight.
I'm okay with skipping the walkthrough of the presentation. Does everyone else feel comfortable with that? Alrighty, questions? I got some questions, who got, who wants to start? You ready? What? No?
You can go.
Nobody?
I like the changes.
I have, I'll start off with a very specific question, because I found it interesting. On page 1-8, they talk about the lease terms of that chunk of land we own. Can someone explain that to me? Or, maybe not, but like, maybe this isn't the time, but that makes it sound like now is the time that Virginia Tech UVA would be like purchasing five acres from the city for millions of dollars. I haven't heard anyone talk about that, it's sort of just slipped in there. Is that, did anyone else read that part? And then it's unclear what the purchase price at which time, at this time, like right now? Because this is the beginning of the 26th year of the ground lease. Or do they mean at the beginning of the ground, of the first year of the ground lease, which would have been 26 years ago? Anyway, I assume you guys know something about it, since it's in here, but that seems like juicy stuff.
I would have to check into that a little bit further. I hadn't written that specific paragraph, but I can check in that and get the information back to the commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that the, the problem is, it doesn't really tell you when this option to purchase kicks in, and our, or is it?
Begins the 26th year of the ground lease, which.
I guess.
Ground lease was February 14th, 1994, that was 26 years ago Friday.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I, this is not relevant.
But it says the ground lease could be up to 40 years, so that's what was confusing to me.
Yeah, but the purchase, anyway, it's fine.
I know, I get what you're saying.
It's not probably that important for this discussion, but that's juicy, I'd like more information about it at some point.
I wish we could break that lease.
Other, while we're on the same section, I mean, I had other comments, but I mean, since we're starting, we're in the intro section. I think I brought it up last time, like in the, the history section, which had this weird reference, which was taken out to like segregationist, whatever, whatever. So that's gone, which is good. But what I think is still missing is that it doesn't talk about any of the history of how those industrial uses came to be. Like, why is there a concrete plant back there? Why, you know, when did the city get the property yard? Why is there a sheet, you know, sheet metal fabricator and auto dealer? I mean, it doesn't talk about the actual development of that part of town. It's one of the few little industrial pockets, quasi-industrial pockets that we have. I know it's because the railroad was there, so, so, but we don't say that. You're right, it's self-evident to people who know the history that there was a railroad there at one time, but a new resident doesn't, you know, that's not always obvious that there was a railroad there, but why was there a concrete plant? I mean, this all, I mean, this, and how long has it been there? And when did Don Byer auto, you know, open a car dealer there? It's been there for some time. But I'm saying, if it's gonna trace the history, talking about the history of our school system is somewhat interesting, but it, and I think, I don't know where that language is from, where it's going back, like, it kind of jumps all over from like the 1800s, and then boom, up to 1950. You know, I, I mean, something might have happened there between 1895 and 1948. In fact, I think a lot of stuff probably have, that's probably when most of those little, that area actually became quasi-industrial. So I just think the history, since we're, if we're gonna have this, this laser focus on these little neighborhoods in the city, we should be able to. This was citywide, yeah, we can't talk about the history of every little parcel, but since it's such a small area, you know, this, this history doesn't talk about anything south of Route 7 after like the 19th century, so, um, I think it should, I think it should talk about that, and, and, and explain like how that happened, because we're, in some ways, this plan is like a shift from what's been the predominant land use in this area. And if we're gonna, as a community, say, we want to shift away from what's been the predominant character of that corner of town for many, many years, we should know why we're making that shift. I mean, there should be consensus that that's the direction we want to go, and I, and I'm not saying there isn't consensus that we want to go in that direction, but the only way you know that is if you look back at the history and understand like why those uses located there. I mean, they're still there, so I don't know if they're profitable or not, but they're there. And so if we're gonna recommend in this plan that they go away, even though I, there's a sentence in here somewhere that says we're not advocating like, immediately to have, force anyone out, we should just, you know, we should trace back the history and understand it, and not gloss over that. That's my, my two cents anyway, as far as that goes. But it, I mean, you know, the other, the weird part that I didn't like from the first time we saw the draft is gone, so that's good, but, but, but we're still missing stuff, I think, as far as like.
I think we agree, there needs to be a paragraph in here about the industrial uses there, and when they came into play.
Yeah, how long is, I don't know.
Because I think that cement factory's been there a long, long time.
Yeah, I wonder, how long has Vulcan been back there? I don't know, probably a long time, I don't know. I haven't looked at like aerial photography to like, kind of tried to eyeball when it's been there, but, um, yeah, and, and why? And, and how long has Don Byer been there? I know approximately he's been there since like the 60s, 70s, I don't know, 50s, you know? So how long has it been there? How long has it been a big open car, you know, parking lot back there?
Well, how long has Giant been there?
That we know, yeah, that too, right, yeah, that, that, right, yeah.
Starbucks.
Well, the shopping center is interesting to talk about, when that, you know, that's two separate shopping centers.
So a little more history, I mean, I don't know. So a little more history. I mean, I don't know how, how one acquires this historical knowledge, but that would, I would appreciate that.
We don't know the history of it, who the heck does? I mean.
Maybe nobody.
We're not talking about, you know, thousands of years ago. I think we can piece it together.
Staff can check in with the historical commission and see what records they might have and then also look back at past land use records.
Past plans, yeah, I mean, some of the original documents might say stuff.
I would also say, like, I, I'm trying to recall, but I don't think the, well, I don't know what we've done in past area plans, you know, like, I think history's cool. I think in some ways the history of the area is relevant, especially as it relates to changes we're suggesting, but. I, you know, I don't know how much, I, I don't want to sink like hundreds of hours of staff.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not suggesting we have a separate like history chapter. I, I just mean, you know, a few more paragraphs to explain.
Yeah, so a couple of days of more research, that sounds great, but I, I would also make it sort of on par with what we've done.
Right, well, and one thing, it's like on one dash four, the regional context, we talk about the metro station being there, we talk about UVA, we talk about the condos and the single-family homes, but we don't talk about the fact that there's industrial there.
Right.
So we could, we could actually just put that in there.
All right. What else you got, Brett?
That's it, well, in that section, I mean, there are other comments I have. I don't know if we want to go, are we going to go like through the document?
Since we're in the section, let's just take the section. Another comment I had, and I think this is fine and most of us understand it, but it, maybe this is the appropriate way to talk about, but in several places, we talk about the land that went from Fairfax County to Falls Church. And it, if you read it, you know, you're talking about, it sounds like somehow this land was owned by Fairfax County and then Falls Church became the owner of it when that wasn't what happened. What happened was we owned it all along, it just became part of the jurisdiction.
We annexed it, we annexed it.
Yeah, so I don't know if that language should be cleaned up, just because it's a little bit confusing, especially when it comes after the paragraphs about actual land that we own and potentially.
About a boundary adjustment.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I, again, it talks about boundary adjustment, but then it says, um, blah, blah, blah. Agreement to, and transfer of thirty-eight point four acres from Fairfax County to the city of Falls Church. It's more like into the city of Falls Church. Again, I don't think it's a big deal, but I've talked to people before who, who think like, oh, the city bought this land from Fairfax County or somehow traded the land for the water system. I'm like, well, we always owned the land, we just got them to put it into the city. So maybe, maybe make that, uh, a little more clear.
I mean, not if we, I mean, if using the word annexation is like, I don't know, that, I mean, that's really what we did. We annexed the land. I don't know, you know, in Virginia, annexation's kind of a.
Yeah, well, and I don't.
Trail that, you know, we normally, cities can't do, but in this case, we, we kind of did, so. But yeah, I guess, I mean, I don't know, the boundary adjustment was what, what we called it at the time.
Yeah, and I think boundary adjustment is fine, I just think change that in to into maybe is the, the key. Like, I just, when I read it, I was like, yeah, somebody's going to think this means there was an exchange of, of ownership of land, which obviously didn't happen.
Maybe they can say somewhere in there that we actually own the land.
Yeah, but I think that's all I had in the history section. All right, anybody have any, what are, what's the next section? Intro and background, then we've got Concepts. How are people feeling about the Concepts? Very conceptual.
I just, I, I, we had a couple of pictures in there about Pentagon Row and some other locations. And I, I feel like based on the, the maturity of the plan that we have now for the new development that's going in there. I mean, these were renderings anyway. I, I think I was looking at page two dash ten specifically. I just felt like we could use our current proposal as opposed to what's happening in Pentagon Row. We have plans for gathering spaces now and they're presentable in, at, in this format. This is. I want to highlight what we're doing, what we're doing as opposed to what other people are doing.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, obviously, when trying to show something that we don't have, that makes sense, but yeah, to your point, we've got, we have renderings already that look as good as this, so. Why not use those? All right. I didn't have a lot on the Concepts.
Yeah, I like the new vision too.
I just came, like literally today from Savannah, Georgia, just, and you have, it mentioned here twice, both in Concepts and then later on in the block size. It's, it's my first time really looking at it. It's impressive, the designing that they thought about a hundred and fifty years ago. But I love the way they broke up the blocks into smaller sections and have those little community spaces throughout. I was, from an urban planning standpoint, I was really impressed with it. Just, so I happened to be walking around there today.
James Oglethorpe.
Yeah, it's even more than a hundred and fifty years, I was going to say, but yeah, the grid was laid out. Yeah, eighteen century.
Uh, all right.
I missed a comment on intro and background.
That's fine, we can go back.
Just under, um, existing comprehensive plan guidance on page one dash twelve, under sustainability. I'll surprise you guys to hear this from me, but, um, I think, and I think our, our chapter five, which I'm not able to call up right now, natural, the new environment for everyone plan, we talk about climate resilience. So I think we need to have that in, either, either incorporated into environmental sustainability or as a standalone bullet.
So these bullet points are specifically what has been called out for these planning opportunity areas, not what has been done in chapter five. So the comprehensive plan, uh, the land use chapter has design guidelines for each POA. So these were pulled out, um, and then there were some goals set forth when POA eight was adopt, or added, um, in. So that's where these are coming from.
Climate resilience to that?
This is all.
It's all set in stone?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll work it in elsewhere.
One day we'll update the guidance and then we'll fix it.
All right. Land use and zoning. I didn't have a lot here, this all seemed to be in line with. I do have some comments later on about data centers, but I think it comes up later more thoroughly, so.
Did anyone on the commission have any cons, uh, comments on the concept map on page three dash six? Staff was looking at what land uses to propose within the Gordon Row Triangle area. So the idea here is to encourage mixed-use development throughout the area while still retaining, uh, the ability to do light industrial and office within the Gordon Row Triangle.
I think the only comment I had on this when I saw it is, I'm a big believer in not putting transitional unless we have to, because we end up with this kind of weird place of not getting what exactly we want, and I, I'd rather just see that whole thing office commercial.
So I think the idea here is that the neighbors, uh, the neighborhoods back there have been concerned about, uh, new development backing right up to the homes. And so having a softer residential edge could help ease those concerns, uh, but still looking at what that might be.
I would rather it be something else, because what happens with transitional, if it follows traditional transitional, is you can put office commercial in there or retail, or you can put houses in. And then what we end up is we, we would end up with houses and this, this area, at least part of that, is currently commercial. And I don't think we really want to change it to houses. They, they currently have a border with a commercial property. So I don't think.
The border of a concrete plant.
Well, we're, we're really talking about, it's behind the shopping center.
Well, my question is, is this zoning or, I mean, the, the reality is, I mean, the reality is all of those are going to be redeveloped as a one thing and probably go through a special exception process. And at that point, it'll be stressed, the transitional nature of whatever they build down to. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know what this means necessarily. We're not going to rezone the back stripe transit, you know.
So this is not, this is not intended to be a zoning map, but it's, it's a general high-level overview of what the concept for redevelopment could be.
And we called that yellow, um, like a step-down section. I could get that.
Yeah, if you mean transitional as in the word transitional versus the zone transitional, we'd feel better.
Because transitional in terms of like zoning use T one.
Yeah, that's.
We don't, we're not going to take the back of that shopping center and turn it into residential.
If you want to rezone that strip of residential, T one.
Yeah, I, I think if you want, I think we need to rename it, maybe the, call that yellow a step-down zone.
Well, isn't, isn't the map on three, seven kind of the, what you're proposing for the, for the actual plan map?
Yeah, I think it is, but.
I know, I know you're saying concept. I guess you maybe need to explain when you, you know, the concept map. Do you explain those categories better? You do transition areas on the west end.
I just don't want people seeing this map and thinking this means that we're going to take the back of a curmer, currently all commercial property and change transition to anything but commercial.
Right.
So that's, that, I'm just afraid that that's what that map's going to do.
I mean, part of that transition, right, is against multifamily, you know, up against those multifamily, I guess they're condos.
But those condos exist now.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right, and so.
With that current bor, border.
Right, so why do we, right, why do we need a transition to the condos when today they're up against the shopping center? I mean, I guess if you're talking about heights, but as far as uses, um, I mean, right now, right, it's, 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 it's got a hard edge against a, you know, against retail and commercial right now.
And again, uh, to me, it seems moot, because whatever gets built there is going to go through a process where.
Well, with the plan guides, what's going to get built there.
I guess my point is that what we're trying to, I think what we're mostly trying to point out is, hey, light industrial over here, which we can talk about in a minute, and commercial over here, and we want active retail along Broad Street. I mean, I guess we, it's worth noting that the backside, you know, where it joins up with residential needs to be transitional in nature. But I guess it's, to me, it seems like it's not so much a use as it is a, uh, design, a design issue.
Like a form-based code, right?
Well, the whole thing is, this is supposed to be the concept, and I'm just afraid because of the use of transitional zoning, that.
Talks about use of the thing.
That the residents will assume that means that it could be houses or something, and I don't think that's what we want. I think instead we might want to say a step-down area, because I think that's more what we're talking about, that this would be commercial, but we would try to be, we try, we would try not to have a twelve-story building right on their border.
I agree. That's my full comment.
Yeah, well, I just, I, I can just see us having a plan for this and then coming up with this map and going, you never said there would be commercial here.
I mean, the plan, and the text can, maybe the, the text that accompanies these maps can explain it better. I mean, what on the other side, though, on the south side, you know, I thought we're trying to move away from the light industrial. So why is the concept to keep the light industrial?
Yeah, I was going to ask, throughout here, we talk about the potential upside of having some light industrial zoning in the city. And there's lots of talk about the data center thing, which I can talk about, but I sort of get the idea that we might, I mean, some of the uses, like a brewery or something, but like, I think generally industrial does not, I mean, if there's nothing, I mean, do we need industrial in the city?
I mean, I don't think, I mean, again, even though I was talking about the history, I don't think we want the concrete plant to stay.
Which technically is.
That's heavy, that's, that's heavy industrial, I guess, but that's in the city.
No, no, it's in Fairfax County.
Part of, isn't part of it in the city?
No, no, if you, we don't, it isn't.
But anyway, I, so I also wondered about what it, what is the.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
What is the thinking behind wanting to make sure we maintain some industrial zoning, just because it's nice to have variety?
Uh, I believe in other meetings, there has been some desire to keep some of the industrial, not just completely wipe it all away, but maybe this is an opportunity to think a little bit more closely about what types of industrial uses the city would like.
Because if you look at what's there today, I mean, it's what, the sheet metal fabricator, the U-Haul, which is an industrial.
The property yard.
The only thing that's really industrial, you know, actually is the, right, the sheet metal fabricator, Dixie Sheet Metal. And then there's like, um, and the auto, and the, and the, and the, the auto body place, which is, is, is a, you know, I mean, so those aren't really, I mean, they technically fall into like light industrial categories.
Like U-Haul rental, I don't know what that is technically classified as, but.
Vehicle, vehicle rental and, you know, truck rental, it's, it's, right, so I don't think we want to see those uses stay, at least not that. I don't know, I think the goal would be, we're looking for something, because then you could move on to the plan map and you're showing all mixed use. I mean, light industrial, I don't know if I would factor that into mixed use.
Live right above the, uh.
The, the only advantage of the, the light industrial would be our own, our city, uh.
Property yard.
Property yard.
Oh, we can say public, that's a public use, public use to go anywhere.
Yeah, but other than that, I see no value in this as being our plan for thirty, forty years from now.
Well, and.
Says nothing to.
Yeah, I, I, we should skip ahead to where, somewhere talks about the, the light industrial uses that have, that are positive. And I thought, well, that's kind of cool, but I didn't realize that, like, like a brewery, is that a, that's a light industrial use? Don't we have a brewery at, right there in that mixed use?
And it doesn't have to be a brewery restaurant, right?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, like, so I was starting to wonder like, what actually counts?
You could get an exception for that if you put, wanted to put a brewery in there. I mean, if, if you came to the Planning Commission.
Right, we have, we have a brewery, we have Mad Fox.
I mean, the reality is the value of the land, I mean, right now it's not zoned for, but the value of the land is, is going to, is not going to be attractive to light, light industry. And I think, you know, I think it's an opportunity, right, to take these big chunks of industrial land and, right. And, and the concept kind of gets at that later in the plan. I mean, so we, we ought to just be consistent, I think, because later in the plan, we kind of, we're showing renderings, showing like blocks of, you know, multi-story buildings back there, so.
So should we change it to blue except for the property yard sections?
Yeah, maybe we should.
So what, we should give a suggestion. We think that the light industrial should be blue except for the property yard parts.
Right.
And I can say arch.
Well, just, just real quick, on.
Strip, I don't like.
Page four-ten, they talk about light industrial uses such as small-scale manufacturing, which can add a unique, breweries, distilleries, we have, we have those in non-industrial areas. I don't know what the deal is there. Arts and craft markets, maker spaces, food production. I guess I was surprised that all of those were considered industrial. I thought those were all.
Food production going on in different places.
Yeah, so that was part of my thing, because I think most people think about industrial uses are things like oil refineries and chemical plants and.
Well, that's, there's, there's heavy industry and there's light industry.
Well, whatever.
That's heavy.
And then, and now I'll just talk about data centers. Who is the data center proponent? Like, I, this is news to me that people care that their data is close to them.
This was something that was brought up at the December ninth, uh, council work session.
By who? A data center expert?
Member Litkin House brought it up.
I'll talk to Ross. I, maybe he knows more about data centers than I know, because like, all of our data is in the cloud and I think it's in Seattle or Ohio or Kentucky.
People like local produce, not so much local data.
Yeah, so I, and I'm not an expert, I'm a, I'm a technical guy, so I probably know more about data centers than the average person. But, and so I could be totally wrong and I, and I would, the other thing I know about data centers is they're usually square windowless buildings with like three workers for like acres of stuff.
Wall Street does actually care, but beyond that, I don't think anybody else.
All right, so when, when we change the name of Broad Street to Wall Street, rezone, but, but I guess what I'm saying is if I'm missing the, if I'm missing the boat on data centers, that's cool. I would put footnotes in here or something, because, because I was surprised by that. And like I said, the, my main beef, honestly, is like, most data centers are boring buildings with no windows.
That's why they're out in Loudoun County.
And, and no workers to go and eat at our restaurants and live.
It's, it's the exact opposite. That's why the data centers are all clustered in eastern Loudoun County, because, you know, they have lots of them.
Especially now when you want to build your data center next to a big solar farm or something like that. So, and, uh, you know, I don't, it'd be interesting, I, I don't even know if we have the data to do it, but like if you're going to plug in a data center into the EDO's fiscal model, I, I suspect it spits out a pretty low number. So now, if you're saying, hey, here's a data center and on top of that, you're going to build an indoor sports facility, like, okay, that might be cool, but, yeah. So I.
I don't see it.
I would be willing for some future meeting for some industrial zoning fan to come in and tell us why we're being dumb about this, but.
I mean, I, I, I agree. I don't see any reason to have so much attention paid in this plan to a data center, you know, in Falls Church. I just don't think it makes any sense.
No, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, so, so back to that concept map.
So I looked up the edge data centers and there's some very nice websites that explain to you what it is. But again, it's basically.
Falls Church is not an edge, I mean, we're in the core.
Right, that's what I was going to say. It, it doesn't make sense for us, because it's really about boosting the cloud in areas that are far from the data centers.
Yeah, we're not that far from the, the big, big, big data centers, like, like globally big data. All right, so on that concept map, I think my, my feeling, it sounds like what we're hearing is, we're not that into light industrial. Sure, we need to make sure we have a place for the property yard, although later on it mentions, and I think this is a great idea, you know, encourage some sort of public partner, public-private partnership to redevelop something cool on top of the property yard. That sounds cool. I think, so if that orange turned blue, that's cool. I think for yellow, what we, I think having a footnote that points out, hey, this is adjacent to residential. So whatever goes in here has to be designed properly, but we're not trying to convey transitional use, right? We don't want like ground floor transitional use back there. We want.
We need a new label.
We want whatever this is redeveloped to take into account the adjacent residential stuff. So I, I think transitional, because it is a, see, active retail is not a zoning thing. Office commercial, there's some B zones, but transitional is an actual zoning term, and I think that is what Melissa's reacting to, which I agree with, so. Because I think the big picture we're trying to say is like, hey, we want mixed use in here, we want retail where we can, and we, I think office should be, should be encouraged, because I, if you get a bank to loan something, I mean, I know there's a million office buildings in Tyson's Corner and Reston, but there's none here. And we're inside the Beltway and we've got two metro stations and these are things that other places don't have. But, uh, that would be my guidance there. uh, that would be my guidance there. Um, I mean, this is definitely different from other areas where, in other areas, we have resisted blanketing it with mixed use, but it seems like up here, 'cause there's a metro station, we're, we're more amenable to mixed use pretty much everywhere.
So that kinda goes to 313, where we have what we call our potential zoning map amendment, and so right now, it is listed in this section as stay-in zone, it's M1 light industry, industry. So it makes me wonder, should we request that that be switched to B2, general business?
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Yeah, otherwise, how, what's the point of this plan, if we're gonna keep it as M1?
Right, 'cause you can't, um, can you do a special exception building in M1?
So one of the recommendations that staff had for that area would be to open it up to be able to use the B2 uses and go through special exception without rezoning it, um...
I don't know why we're so afraid of rezoning in this...
Yeah, we don't ever resent anything, so...
I, I don't know why, I mean, I, I don't know why we're so afraid of rezoning, I know there's this, there's this mindset here that, you know, we shouldn't, you know, we, we try to do everything through special exceptions, but...
Well, and...
I, I don't know.
I think you could rezone this from M1 or whatever it is to B2 or whatever, and they'd still have to go through the special exception, I mean, I think...
Well, yeah, we should still require, I mean, well, in a rezoning process, we, you know, it would require...
Yeah, right, but I'm, so I'm agreeing, I think, I think, I, we are resistant to rezoning, maybe this is an area where we would be okay with it, because...
I think it would be, why, why do we wanna keep them in, in light, light industrial zoning?
Data centers, man, it's the future.
When, when, when the plan is calling to remove all light industrial uses, we don't wanna keep light industrial zoning.
Yeah, I do think that, yes.
So I think the plan should call for that and then encourage, encourage folks to rezone, go through a rezoning there, I mean, you know.
I think so.
And it's funny, in that, in that, um, 313, you see the effect, like, the parts that are yellow that kept as limited business, so...
Where are you?
On that 313 map, the one that kept Gordon Triangle as, um, light industry.
Right.
So what's interesting is that the part that they called, that yellow part, that kind of left as the B1, the limited business, which kind of forces a step down.
Well, all, well, all that yellow is outside of the planning area.
Right, right, I was just talking about the light pink.
Which I've always thought was, I always thought we should be more willing to plan some residentially-zoned adjacent stuff, but whatever.
No, I meant the yellow from the other map, that traditional yellow.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That traditional's yellow.
Oh, light pink.
Yeah, they made it light pink, not, not the residential.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Also, at one point, were we talking about, uh, kind of making some changes to the road grid, you know, Gordon Road would connect to Birch Street and kind of, I don't know when that issue would be, start to make its way into our planning documents, but...
Well, there's something about the road grid in here, right?
There is, now, does it show that? I mean, yeah, this is the time to lay out what we wanna see.
Right.
And then when redevelopment comes in...
Urban Design Chapter, but do we actually draw out what we...
There, there was a potential road grid in one of the, later on in, in this.
Yeah, I don't know, but I don't know if we actually...
I think it's in Urban Design.
Yeah, but I don't think we, I don't think we draw a potential layout of that specific area.
So page, uh, 6-3 has a, a very high-level conceptual, um, grid laid out, but I think the strategy from this plan is to continue to work with developers as they're redeveloping their properties to make sure it lines up, as at this point, we can't necessarily draw out those grids, we don't exactly know what's going to happen on those properties.
Yeah, definitely, but, yeah, but the point of this plan is to, this is what I've always said about these plans, is if we can do as much as we, you know, if we can do more to make it quicker for a developer to come in and do stuff, it's better for everybody. So I think this layout is probably, I don't know, it's small, it's hard to see, but sufficient in terms of giving a developer an idea of what we, what we'd like, but it's a little bit weird down here in the multimodal connectivity section.
Well, it shows a bike trail cutting through, right, to, I have no, I see, it doesn't show Gordon Road lining up, it just shows a...
Yeah.
It says bicycle and pedestrian investments.
Yeah, that's a good point, I don't even know what I'm looking at here.
But, yeah, but it does show...
It shows road, there's a road under that blue dot, but yeah, that, I guess that's a question, is, this grid is kind of what I'm interested in, but I wonder if we should have a non-multi-modal, just a regular road version up in the urban design, I don't know where it would go, but... But obviously, the, we wouldn't, that would just be like a, something for a developer to come in and know that, hey, if I propose this, I'm probably gonna get favorable reaction 'cause it's in the plan, but obviously, they could come in and propose a different road grid and probably...
You're not crazy, that's how planning's supposed to work.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, that's actually, that's kinda how it works, you gotta, this is high level, this is the, this is the plan, this is conceptual, this is what we wanna see, and then the rezonings and the, and the, and the development comes in and, and meets that, and then they get, then it, then it happens, and it gets implemented through the zoning, you know, and through the development proposals, but this is where the high level, where we should be laying out those things, so...
So what section should something like that go in?
I mean, we need like a, either a transportation section, I mean, yeah, it could be what we're calling connectivity, I mean, a transportation section, we'd talk about all that.
Where it is makes sense.
'Cause right now, what's really difficult there, right, is you have those like, people make those awkward turns in and out of Gordon Road, um, you know, there's like a short little area for storage, you can fit maybe three cars trying to make a left into Gordon Road or out, and, and, and it's awkward, and then people going the other way, sometimes people don't even follow the lines, people who are going eastbound on Broad and wanna make a left onto Birch, a lot of times, like, will go across the double yellow inadvertently, you know, and it's, it gets very awkward there, I mean, ideally, it would be lined up, I mean, ideally, Gordon would line up.
And we, and we, we know that, that the buyer people that own it, I mean, that's, they, they express interest in that, so, at least with Birch.
Right, that's the thing, I mean, sometimes you're right, if, if everything was owned by different people and it's all, you know, it, it's hard to, to say, okay, we're just gonna move the road, but here you have one or two big landowners that own, that own big chunks, it's actually not as difficult when someone comes in to redevelop to, to do something like that, when they own all the land all around it.
Right.
Uh, which in this case, they do, right, they pretty much own the...
Most of it.
Most of it, almost all of it.
All of it.
All right, well, so I think whether that's just a version of this map that takes away the bike routes, so you can clearly see that, or something...
So where's that?
Page...
Oh, yeah, in the same vein, on, on page, on 6-4, that picture where we talk about difficulty walking, we need a better picture, 'cause that picture makes it look like it's tumbleweeds rolling down the street, and if that was how it was most of the time, I don't think we would need any help crossing the street, is either picture on 6-4?
Yeah, somebody went out and took some pictures on a Sunday morning.
Like, Sunday morning at like 7:00 AM on, yeah, I don't know.
There's another one somewhere else where we're like, where are the cars?
I know when it looks like that, and that's not typical, right, we all know that, so...
Where is that?
That's...
It's crossing by the part, by the buyer parts store, across Staples.
Looking up towards Giant.
'Cause there's no way, I've never seen it look like that.
Yeah, if you're out there early, once in a while. So that picture, I was, we need someone to go out there at 5:00, when it's, when it's literally backed up the entire way, and you have the guys who wait out kinda by the U-Haul place, running back and cor... You know, there are people that kind of stay, hang out there looking for work.
It almost looks like a rendering and they forgot to...
And they run back and forth across the street there, um, people wait in the middle, and so that, that doesn't show you how dangerous it actually is and how bad it is, so we should get a real picture.
You're right, I, I just saw that and thought they were just talking about how people cross.
Yeah, that, that picture has to go, 'cause it's just...
Right, if you look at where it is, it's not just about jaywalking, it's about there, it's empty, there must have been, maybe there was an apocalypse there.
Right, it's saying it's like, it's saying it's not safe to cross, well, if it looked like that every day, it would be pretty safe.
All right, um...
It's still jaywalking.
I, I noticed somewhere that there was commentary, maybe it was in the staff report, about, um, trying to make, and, and I guess that thing we were just looking at sort of shows it, but, um, the, the getting from the trail to the school site, is that, was that one little thing, that one multimodal layout, are, it, I didn't, I, I didn't, I tried going through this all today, but, and so maybe I missed it, but do we have any kind of particularly specific ideas for how we could ever connect those up, is it just that one on page 6-3, that little map that's hard to read?
I think that's the only visual currently in the plan.
And that, and that...
So it would...
Isn't particularly, I mean, so you put a blue bicycle pedestrian investments down Broad Street, but I, there, I guess what I'm wondering is, the bike trail is so tantalizingly close to the high school, and yet so dangerously far away, um, and the answer's never gonna be like improved Broad Street, so...
So also on this map, um, it's showing a, a trail running back behind, uh, the federal realty property.
Right, which I think is our best bet, I guess what I'm saying is maybe focus in on that and not have that co, you know, co-mingled with the just general bike improvement, so we can bike up and down every street without any, you know what I'm saying, like, 'cause if you could do that, if you could do that, pull off at, uh, West End Park, go behind that whole thing on that transitional part, that's exactly what we need to have happen, I would make that a much more prominent part of the plan.
You know, the sidewalk's gonna be closed off in, um, Haycock, and so the schools have put out an alternative plan on how to get to the high school without, like, going around that, and part of it is like, looks like, it's like a trail through the shopping center.
Yeah, one of them is to basically go down to the property yard and go on quarter of the road, but...
Yeah.
All right, let me see if I'm done with my stuff, my, it's about data centers.
Maybe the trail goes in the transition zone.
There you go.
Yeah, that's, exactly.
You can understand why I don't like transition zones.
My final comment, and other people can make other final comments, was, um, uh, oh, somewhere, 4-7, I kinda chuckled at this, where it said the city, uh, the city currently has office space available that is well-suited for startups.
Where would that be?
I think that, I think the point we're trying to say is like, hey, we have some small hodgepodge spaces that might work well, but we don't have, it mentions, we don't have like a 3,000, 10,000 square foot, uh, space, which is, that is definitely true, but I think, um, even the small spaces we have, I mean, they're well-suited for a pretty rough-and-thumble startup, I mean, we don't have any like, we have terrible, I mean, we have a couple of good office spaces, most of it's pretty bad, but my big, my bigger comment is, um, and I, and I was talking about this a minute ago, I mean, I get why we don't have office buildings, there's a bunch of...
It's 'cause we don't have data centers.
We need some data centers, but there's also, there's a lot of office buildings in the region that aren't filled, and I'm not a banker or a real estate agent, so I'm probably wrong, but it, it seems to me that there aren't many office buildings in a place like Falls Church in terms of inside the Beltway, near the metro, lots of highly educated people living nearby, um, sort of splitting the difference between being downtown and being at Tyson's, all that stuff, so, and I know you can never convince a bank, but somewhere we mentioned in the economic development part, I think industrial revenue bonds, and I'm not a financial wizard, but I've always felt like if the EDA or the city would be willing to take on some risk, which probably they, they don't want to, um, and somehow help somebody build an office building, it only takes one, gets filled up, is a boon, and then a banker goes, oh, sure, maybe I'll, and maybe we'll get that with the, um, high school site, and they'll build their office building and it'll get filled up, but, um, I don't know, I don't know if there's a way for, in this section, to talk about the city somehow trying to do more to encourage office buildings. I feel like nice office buildings is the main thing we're missing in the city, we got nice apartment buildings, got lots of nice restaurants, we have a very fancy school being built, new library, sort of.
Sort of.
Part of it.
We are an emerging market in the terms of one of the developers who came and spoke at one of our panel discussions in the West Falls Church.
Yeah, when I used to cover the, um, EDA, the, um, head of economic development for Fairfax County came and spoke to the EDA, and also came and spoke to the planning commission once, too, but anyway, one of the points he made is that we're in a good location for offices for like European companies, who need to have a presence here 'cause of business they have in the US, 'cause we're in a nice area for transportation between two airports. So there's a lot of things we can market here.
Yeah, but I see, I, you know, I think it's, I, I don't know that, but I don't know what we can do, 'cause I mean, a developer's gonna go to a bank, bank's gonna say, we're not gonna loan you money for office buildings, it's insane, so...
Well, I think we have to prove ourselves as a micro-market, 'cause we're not the northern, North Virginian, Northern Virginian market, we're a smaller, different type of market than a lot of those other ones, but, I don't know, we can do it.
And I think overall, like, one of the things that came up when this first version came out, and you guys were like, hey, we're not really at that point yet, but is, um, I, I do think it is, it is mentioned here in the economic development stuff, is that, uh, you know, there's a lot of potential up here, I mean, like, it talks about design, all the uses and stuff like that, but there's a lot of revenue potential for the city up in this area, and I think we have to, um, embrace that aspect, which is why I think being willing to have mixed use throughout, having potentially high FAR, investing in the walkability and everything, like, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, 30 years from now, we, we might look back and say like, wow, this little area is what's funding the entire city or at least big chunks of it, so, I mean, I think even more so than other area plans that we've worked on.
Okay.
All right, other questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a correction, I just remembered, on 7-1, there's a section where it's trips run tributaries, tributaries is misspelled, I just wanted to catch that since that's in...
I think those kinds of comments should just be emailed to people.
Oh, okay, well, I'm gonna do that, and I did wanna mention that we do talk about some green infrastructure in this section, so, which is good, at least we're still on it.
It's about time, about time.
On, um, page 7-7, um, I'll kind of reiterate what I said the last time, um, we, um, looked at district energy about five years ago, it was very popular, Arlington put a lot of money into it, decided that it ultimately is just too expensive, uh, doesn't appeal to private industry, so, uh, it's, it's kind of had its day and then passed, so I'm not sure that we wanna be signaling to potential developers at this point that district energy is a, is a reality when it's not.
I had talked with Kate Walker about whether or not we should pull that out, and she was thinking that this area of the city with having larger areas that are under single ownership would still be, uh, potentially feasible for district energy, so maybe it's something that we just need to look into a little bit further.
It's interesting, 'cause I spoke with her today, too. She was very surprised, 'cause I said, had you looked at this, and she said, no.
We had chatted about it before the December 9th council work session, so maybe it's slipped her mind with other things going on.
Might be good to...
So I'll check back in with her.
Okay, especially since we now have the, um, accepted and adopted comprehensive plan, um, so it'd be good for this to be in conformance with that, obviously, uh, but both the district energy and, uh, I mean, it's good that we mentioned energy efficiency for buildings, 'cause that, that definitely is, you know, something that we wanna promote, but I think what seems to be the emerging trend in that arena is, uh, net-zero-ready buildings, not actual net zero, because that's very expensive, you gotta put all the solar panels and everything else.
Like, the school is supposed to be net-zero-ready.
It's net-zero-ready, that's right, and, and it just says you gotta have a lot of insulation, it's gotta be oriented the right way, and, you know, but you don't make the real big investment until you're ready for it or the conditions are right, and, uh, so the builders actually like that, that, uh, category a lot more, so, that, that may be So, that, that may be the one that we should be signaling to developers that we'd be very interested if they pursue it.
I like that.
Uh, yeah, I want to support that, not surprisingly. Um, and I, I guess the other point is that this chapter should keep pace with what's going on with the high school in West Falls Church. So, um, I think asking for first of all, I think we should deal with the buildings together. So having a comment on lead under environmental sustainability and then the next section, energy efficiency, we talk about net zero. I think we should just talk about, you know, energy efficient, environmentally sustainable buildings in one pocket, one paragraph, one section. Um, so if we're talking lead, though, I, I agree with Tim that net zero-ready is better. Um, and encouraging to that end, uh, you know, the minimum possible energy usage intensity. I think we should aim higher than lead silver if we're gonna mention lead, because we've got some lead gold going in. Um, and then to that end, just further back in the urban design section, West, uh, sleep deprivation in the late hour and blanking the name of our, the, the, the new development that's gonna go in right next to the high school. That one.
They call this, uh, the.
That's a lead for neighborhood development certified project. And I think lead ND, that certification will help us achieve many of the items in the urban design section. So one strategy that we might want to add there is you know, seek lead ND certified mixed-use developments.
Yeah, I, I, I think it, I think for this kind of document, setting a pretty high bar is a good way to go, because it, again, it'll indicate to developers, hey, if I come in here, you know, hitting or coming close to these things, that's, that's gonna help me. Whereas if we, if we kind of lowball this and someone comes in with that lowball, it's not gonna push them, you know. I, you'll probably still have to horse trade to get some of these things, but, um, assuming people agree with it, uh, I think it's, is a way to, uh, make sure they realize what we're valuing here.
So was this checking, um, uh, this section checked against the new environmental, um, chapter?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good.
Uh, not specifically. Uh, we are going to be doing continued, uh, staff engagement. Um, and so this chapter, uh, we're look, going to be looking for further input from DPW, um, because they have not weighed in on this draft text so far. But we wanted to bring what we had, um, at the moment to get planning commission feedback.
Okay, that's, that's what I wondered, because it's, I mean, it's, it's similar, but there are some differences, so it would be good to make sure that they're aligned.
Yeah. What else we got? What's the next step after we give you all this feedback? Oh, right, what are our strategy and action priorities? In other words, how's this actually gonna work?
So I think some of that's already been addressed unless there's anything else that anyone wants to raise as a, as a major priority. Uh, but the steps moving forward, um, we're planning to go to council on March second. Uh, do some more staff engagement next month, um, to get further, uh, feedback. Um, and then go out to boards and commissions, um, probably beginning, end of March, um, so that we have time to uh, refine the draft chapter after we have, uh, tonight's work session as well as the council work session. Um, and so generally working towards a, a June action.
That sounds good. And, um, I was realizing, you know, this thing is long, you know, as Russ pointed out, it's a hundred and eleven pages, wow. Uh, yeah, I think we made some good progress here, but I would definitely say if people, uh, if this meeting has inspired people to read it in even more detail, that it can't hurt for individuals to like email you guys thoughts ahead of, well ahead of, so you have time to incorporate them if they seem reasonable, um, of the next time we see it, I think that, that might be an efficient way. So like if we've touched on some things, you're like, I have more thoughts on that. I don't, don't be afraid to like zap them over directly and then in our next meeting, they can either be incorporating, we'll see the change, or you, you know, they'll already know what, what to expect if we bring it up there.
Uh, the only, uh, concern with that would be getting conflicting, uh,
Well, that's why.
Questions that the, a group hasn't had the opportunity to, uh, weigh out.
Right, and that's why I think I'm relying on you guys. If you're getting conflicts, yeah, I'm not gonna update it. We can talk about it at the next meeting. Um, but some of the changes are pretty minor and, and just sort of, and, and we do get to see, you know, you guys do a good job of highlighting what's changed, so. Um, that, that's all I'm saying. I agree there. Definitely, um, could be debate and discussion about those. But I know, uh, when I was reading through it, I was like, I probably should have read this last week and zapped some emails over and some of the stuff could have been tweaked, or at least you guys be more prepared to talk about it, but. Okay. Are we good for now? Yes?
We're good. We'll see it again.
That's it on the agenda. Good night.